People icon up on top, is that where you see the all the people?
Yeah, if you click on that, it brings up the list of people. And then when you're done with it, you can click the X on and then it closes it for you.
Okay.
And Jorge, it looks like Sean Kidd has joined us.
Okay, I, I think he is unmuted, so Sean, can you say something? Oh. We sent a mute request to Sean.
Merrick Anopa, you have two icons on here, one says S K, one says Sharon.
So, um, I'm on the iPad for the sound video and then I'm on my laptop so I can pick up the 25 people on that screen, because the iPads are only working with six. So this way I can be able to see all of you. And then Alex, you weren't on for, when you want to speak, if you can put your, um, a pin up to the screen and then I'll, then I'll know that you want to speak and then I'll put a little sign up who's next, like I did last week. So we, it is 7:15, but I'd really kind of want to wait and see if Rich is going to get on first. I don't see Marilyn, is Marilyn on?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep, okay, found you. No video Marilyn?
Yeah, mine, mine's on.
Oh, I don't see you.
Well, that's a blessing.
Is there anybody else? You sure you got your sharing for your camera on?
Yeah, I don't see.
I don't know. Do other people see me? No?
Oh, not, not Marilyn, no.
Yeah, no Marilyn, I think you have to do share.
Yeah, I'm, got it.
There you are, okay.
And I think Council Kilim just joined as well?
Okay, so I don't.
Anybody want some popcorn? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, right here Sharon, right in front of you.
I don't see him.
He's at the bottom of the screen Mayor, and you have to scroll.
Okay.
No, he's not online, is he on yours Jorge?
Uh, I can see him on the list, yes. Okay, so it's, it's, uh, 7:16, um, I'm going to go ahead and have Matt start streaming. And Mayor, uh, you can, you can take over the meeting.
Okay, so what about the screen that you were going to have up about kind of the rules?
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so you, were you done with that Jorge?
Yeah, I'm going to put it up for a second.
Okay.
Here are some of the ground rules for the meeting today at the council, uh, council meeting April 28th, I'll leave those up for a second. Okay, Mayor, you have the floor.
Okay, all right, um, everyone that's online or on the phone, welcome to our city council meeting and welcome to our homes. So, um, so we're a little bit green with all of this, we've only done it one time before, and I'm still struggling to try to find all the councilors on the screen, um, because I think I'm still rich here, but, um, hopefully it'll pop up. But with that, I will call the meeting to order and then Jorge is going to put up everyone that's on the screen and we're just going to have a, um, 15 second moment of silence, everybody can read it in their, um, to themselves in their own homes. Okay, Jorge?
Okay, Mayor, there you go.
Okay, all right, and then Mary, can, can we get a roll call please?
Dick Olson?
Here.
Mike Sykes?
Yes.
Bessie Johnson?
Here.
Rich Kilim?
Here.
Alex Johnson?
Here.
Bill Coburn?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so I still can't find Rich on the screen and does anybody else that's on a, besides an iPad? Um, Alex, do you see him on the screen?
Yeah, if you scroll down there, you'll see him at the bottom of the screen.
Yeah, he's here.
Oh, I see. Um, okay, if I scroll down, but then I lose, I lose you Alex from the top.
Mayor Jorge, Jorge will keep an eye on the councilors and, and whether one of them wants to talk.
All right, but what I'm, I'm, I can get it halfway down so I can see the top of your head Rich and Alex, I can see, I can see your shoulders, so just put your pin when you want to speak, Rich, you put yours up high and Alex, put yours down low.
I can see Rich.
See it, so, yeah. Okay, so business from the public is, we're doing this a little bit front and, and, uh, so what we're going to do is everybody was, it was on the agenda, so we wanted to submit comments, business from the public, and that can be for any, you know, any business, an item that they wanted to bring forward, and it's to be all submitted to the city clerk, so Marilyn Smith is going to, um, read all of them for us, so Marilyn?
Okay, we have two topics this evening that have, we've received comments on, one was not on the agenda, so I'll deal with that one first. There, there is a letter from Lisa Grotto of the Albany Downtown Association. Good evening, city councilors, I'm sharing the Albany Downtown Association's April newsletter. I want to highlight the Drive Up Downtown article about the new curbside pickup program. This new model is working very well. A full list of open restaurants and businesses is posted daily on the Albany Downtown Association's Facebook page. There's also an important article about the Albany Farmers Market. As an essential business, they will be opening for the season as planned on Saturday, April 18. The market is located in the City Hall parking lot and is open from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. To keep people safe, there will be a new layout and many new rules, including one shopper per household. Their new motto is shop and go home. Please read the rules before going to the market. The detailed newsletter article is on the website, albanydowntown.com. There's a press release also on the Farmers Market website, locallygrown.org. Thank you, Lisa Grotto. Uh, on to the second item, that these letters deal with the Second Amendment Resolution, which is on the agenda as the next agenda item under adoption of resolutions. We have received 37 comments. I can summarize briefly by saying that, um, eight were from non-residents, 14 came from people who identified themselves but did not provide addresses, some of them are people who, uh, we know their addresses already, they just didn't include them. There are two letters in support of the resolution, 30 in opposition to the rep, resolution, and 15 object to the time, timing of the resolution. Come now. If you like, I will proceed to read them in no particular order, I'll deal with the letters in support first and move on from there. First, first letter is from someone named Ken H. If this passes, I might have to sell our farm here in Almsville and buy one in Albany. You're on the right track. Bring back the real Oregon, the one I grew up with, not the one they are trying to make as another California. Thank you very much for trying to do this, I truly hope it passes, Ken. Letter number two. To city councilors and mayor, I 100% support your resolution making Albany a sanctuary city. Based upon the US Constitution and the Oregon Constitution, we should not need to do this, but I admire the stance of the council. I have one big concern though, as quoted in the April 6th Democrat Herald, it states that measures pending in the Oregon Legislature would give local schools and governments the right to bar individuals with concealed carry permits from entering their buildings. Emphasis added, part of that is in bold. I have not read the measures pending in the Legislature, but the way I read this is that because I have a concealed carry permit, I can be barred from schools and government offices. This is a travesty. As a concealed carry permit holder, I know the laws about carry in a public facility and would never think about doing it. Nobody I know would either, but it is outstanding to consider that the state government is willing to allow me to be barred from places where I may need to do business just because I have a legal permit. The DAH article titled Safe Haven for Gun Owners clearly misstates the resolution. This just assures that I am not discriminated against just because I have a legally authorized permit and operating within that permit. Please consider passing this resolution to protect the rights of individuals as outlined in our constitutions. Bob Vander Linden. As a community member, I request that our councilors vote against this resolution, it is unnecessary. It seems an attempt by an individual to raise his standing with the gun-owning community. In reading the resolution, it would seem that there are many protections in place from the federal and state level. One more layer of government isn't necessary. It seems to be an attempt to say, look at us, we are a gun rights community. I'm not so sure that is a plus in a community that would like to be seen as a friendly and welcoming place. Nancy Hammond, 3927 Sedgwick Place, Southeast. Albany City Council and Mayor, please do not pass resolutions while no member of the public can attend and participate in the city council meetings. A resolution concerning a Second Amendment sanctuary city should, should wait until citizens can attend the meeting. This smacks of slimy politics, sneaking something through while citizens are occupied elsewhere. The vast majority of Americans support common sense gun safe laws that can keep our families safe. Instead of passing dangerous resolutions with no impact on state or local law, I ask you to focus on solutions that can keep our families safe in Albany, Oregon. Sincerely, Dave Pinyard, 1116 11th Avenue, Southwest. I was just made aware of the resolution the city council will be considering that would establish that the city not, will not recognize any laws passed by the state requiring stricter safety gun, safety around gun ownership. I don't understand this mania about the Second Amendment. No one is having their guns taken away from them, well, except for people who commit crimes with them. I just don't understand what's objectionable about trying to regulate stricter safety around gun ownership. The fact that most gun owners ignore these types of laws anyway makes it a moot point, but at least it gives society some teeth to enforce laws meant to protect those of us who don't feel we need to own a gun. Good reason to avoid coming to Albany if this passes. Lynn Larson, Corvallis. I was alarmed and upset to read that Albany City Council could possibly adopt a resolution to declare Albany a sanctuary city for gun owners. I spoke with two neighbors who agree with me. I have emailed my councilman Alex Johnson and also Mike Sykes who proposed it. I still have scars from being accidentally shot by a child who picked up a gun my husband carelessly left out. It was traumatic for all of us. I think this proposal is irresponsible. Guns are dangerous lethal weapons that should not be invited into a populated area such as Albany. I sincerely hope you and other city council members do the right thing and do not pass this resolution. Thank you. Joan McCarthy, 611 32nd Avenue, Southeast.
Hello, my name is Tess Weir and I live in North Albany. I do not support the resolution that would allow Albany residents to be exempt from state gun laws. I'm disgusted that this would even be brought up for consideration during a pandemic with victims of domestic abuse locked inside homes with their abusers. Gun control exists to make the most vulnerable, safe from violent abusers. Until we can all use guns safely, we will need gun control. The amount of unrest in Albany right now concerns me. Porta potties tipped over in Bryant Park, fire extinguishers let loose on people's cars. We don't need to add guns to that mix. Domestic violence is on the rise, we need better gun laws. Albany needs better gun laws and not to be exempt from state laws. Thank you, Tess Weir. Please accept the following as public comment regarding the resolution, uh, about the Second Amendment. I, I oppose the adoption of the proposed resolution, which effectively designates the city of Albany as a sanctuary city for gun owners. As a local government employee, a member of the Greater Albany Public School Board of Directors, and especially as the mother of two school-aged children, I have grave concerns about this resolution and the message it sends to our community. I believe adopting this resolution will confuse and compromise local law enforcement efforts to respond to individuals found in possession of firearms on school property. In worst-case scenarios, it would undermine those efforts resulting in very real threats to the safety of our students and staff. Instead, what our children need are laws, ordinances, and resolutions that ensure their safety. Law enforcement officers deserve clear guidance and authority to make student and staff safety a priority when responding to threats that occur anywhere on school property. Our municipal policies should prioritize children's needs with physical safety being the most basic over adult convenience and desires. In these increasingly uncertain times, it is not gun owners who need sanctuary, it is our children. Respectfully submitted, Jennifer Ward, 1355 Northwest Penny Lane. As a combat veteran and citizen of this city, I am in opposition to the local proposed gun sanctuary by Mike Sykes. This is the most ridiculous use of taxpayer time and money. I can't even believe you are using council time in the face of this epidemic for such ridiculous shenanigans. Why not ask the kids in your ward who are turning 18 this year what they think? No, Mike Sykes, the government is not coming for your weapons. Oh, that is unless you have intention of buying bump stock and multiple cartridge rounds for your military AR or AK rifle. You really ought to be working on a ban in this county against automatic weapons. Good grief, council, don't waste your time on this nonsense. Larry Schuetz, 928 Trinity Street, Northeast.
My name is Gail Langletto and I'm a resident of Ward 3. I'm writing in a strong opposition to Mr. Sykes' unnecessary suggestion that Gail look, that Albany look into becoming a sanctuary city for gun owners. The right to own a gun is already guaranteed by the United States Constitution. Mr. Sykes' suggestion appears to be performative politics at its worst and a total waste of the council's time. Can't believe you guys are wasting your time and our valuable resources with this gun sanctuary nonsense, get back to work on important issues. This is from, uh, email address from R. Porter Strass. Albany is a diverse, patriotic, loving city. Albany is much more than a few people who feel threatened that someone is going to take their guns. Nobody is taking anybody's guns and the recent history of this country and every politician acknowledges this fact. Do we want machine guns? Of course not. Let's be reasonable. I do not own a gun, but any conflict I have with my fellow humans will be done the old-fashioned way, talking it out. Why, why this sanctuary thing? Can gun people please start talking to ordinary folks and find out that the conspiracy talk that is so rampant in their minds is really not true? The government didn't invade homes during the coronavirus pandemic, nor will they. I value my humanity and this gun sanctuary designation takes away something very important to me about how I want to interact with my fellow human beings. Thanks for listening and reading. John Clock, 830 Northwest River Bow Avenue. Then there were a group of letters that were all, um, had the same content. I will read one of them and the names of the writers. To the vast majority of Americans support, the vast majority of Americans support common sense gun law, gun safe laws that can keep our families safe. Instead of passing dangerous resolutions with no impact on state or local law, I ask you to focus on solutions that can keep our families safe in Albany, Oregon. Resolutions declaring lawless counties and cities, also known as Second Amendment Sanctuary Counties and Cities, don't actually carry any weight. These resolutions would not serve to protect us and aren't in line with the vast majority of voters who support common sense gun laws, like background checks on all gun sales and red flag laws. 100 people die from gun violence every day in this country and hundreds more are wounded. Our elected and appointed leaders like you have an obligation to ensure that law enforcement authorities enforce the law, particularly those laws that help keep us safe from senseless gun violence. I'll continue to advocate for common sense gun laws and to work hand-in-hand with you and law enforcement to keep our communities safe. Robin Van Rossmann, 526 5th Avenue, Southeast. Clarice Fritus, 728 Montgomery Street, Southeast. Denise Miller, 2621 Northwest Raymond Court. And Sylvia Banks, no address. Please vote in opposition to the Second Amendment Resolution to allow Albany, Oregon to be a sanctuary city for gun owners. I'm a former GAPS teacher, land and homeowner, and mother of two daughters in North Albany. This amendment implies that you will not enforce state laws that are stricter than federal laws. As a woman with children and a family of responsible gun owners, I do not approve of this amendment, nor do my two school-aged daughters. A boyfriend will be more likely to beat up a woman and/or a child with less fear of losing his gun or his gun rights if you pass this resolution. Please consider then, in this current COVID-19 pandemic, passing an amendment like this clearly shows that some members, you know who you are, of the city council are willing to pass an inequitable, biased, and morally repugnant, overwhelmingly distasteful resolution under the shroud of a city council meeting. I stand in solidarity with women and children in our community when I say this. Please vote no. Serene Melanthine, uh, Corvallis. Thank you for your service to the city of Albany. Thank you for continuing to engage in important work for the public good while the lives of your families and friends are at risk due to the country's dismal lack of federal leadership, preparedness, and response to the challenge of the virus poses. As directors and operators of a 25-year-old nonprofit within the city, a business that serves and has served many Albany families, as the owners of multiple properties in the city and as gun owners, we hold the quality of life and exercise of all freedoms of all residents and visitors to be important. We urge a no vote on the Second Amendment Resolution, agenda, uh, agenda item 4A for these reasons. The resolution is purely an attack on federals, reasonable federal and state gun safety laws. This resolution implies that they are not reasonable. This is not the Wild West. Gun safety measures that are being denounced by gun rights advocates were passed by democratically-elected legislators and were signed into law by state governors. This resolution and others like it in the nation is purely symbolic and has no legal weight. Like the others, they are just an effort by gun lobby to stoke fear. Passing this resolution will further fuel the divisiveness among citizens of differing opinions at a time when we need more, not less, civility. This resolution signals the white supremacists of this city, this state, and the country that the population of Albany supports their terrorist actions. The overwhelming majority of us do not. A digital city council meeting is simply not the ethical venue to expect to receive accurate public opinion without which this resolution should not be brought for a vote. Stoking fear about Second Amendment rights endangers the rights guaranteed by the First Amendment. Our community faced many challenges of livability, equity, safety, housing, and education for years before the current COVID-19 pandemic that we face now. This is no time to stoke fear and support the spread of misinformation. As citizens of this community for 28 years and business owners for 25, at this time of a global pandemic, school closures, widespread economic uncertainty, and economic hardship, we urge the council to vote no on the resolution of the April 8, 2020 Agenda relating to the Second Amendment. With thanks for your continued service to our city, Keith Barton and Karen Madsen Barton, 342 Coons Drive, Northwest. Please accept the following public comment. On behalf of the Greater Albany Public School District, I oppose the adoption of the proposed resolution designated to create the city of Albany as a sanctuary city for gun owners. Further, a proposal such as this should not come before the council during this time when we are facing a global pandemic that has slammed our community. Right now, my primary focus is the physical and mental health of our students. As a partner in our work, my hope would be that the council is having a laser-like focus on the physical, physical and mental health of our community. The timing of this proposal is poor and insensitive to the matters of import we are facing collectively. As the superintendent responsible for over 9,000 students in the Greater Albany community, I'm deeply concerned regarding the potential unintended impact this may have on our ability to keep students safe. Clarity for law enforcement is critical in regards to school safety and gun violence. Such a resolution could potentially create such confusion among law enforcement that response time in an emergent situation would be lost, resulting in student and staff injury and/or loss of life. It should not go unconsidered that the city of Albany spans two counties as well. As we are having cross-agency and cross-departmental conversations regarding current gun laws and approaches to keep students safe, I believe the city taking this stance will create a barrier in our ability to do this most important job. I would ask the city council to instead consider ordinances and resolutions that ensure student safety through clear authority to keep our students and staff safe from threats occurring on or around school property. I invite the council to keep our student safety at the front of our work during this pandemic and instead affirm the 1,000-foot perimeter of the Federal Gun Free School Zones Act of 1990, 18 U.S. Code 922. And she has attached a copy of that code, um, I will not read it, it'll be entered into the record. There is no greater responsibility for us as city leaders than taking care of our children. Before you is an opportunity to keep their safety first as a part of our, your ongoing support for our children and families during this pandemic. I implore you to keep, help me keep my students safe. Melissa Goff, Superintendent for Greater Albany Public Schools. Albany City Council, please do not use the coronavirus emergency to cover, as, as cover to pass an extremely dangerous and blatantly unconstitutional resolution declaring that Albany will not comply with state firearm regulations. The state constitution makes it clear that counties and cities do have to comply with all state laws and regulations, and if they disagree with them, they must go through the court system to change them. Please do not declare Albany an outlaw enclave. Please don't put Albany's citizens and Albany's city budget through that sort of suffering. John M. Burt, Corvallis. I object to the city council resolution supporting Second Amendment rights. Right now, we are living through an historic event. It is not a happy one, nor is it comfortable, but it is one that has already changed many parts of our society and will continue to change many more. It isn't unique in that, but it is unusual that many of us find ourselves doing new things and doing old things in new ways. One place we see, see new and old things together is here in the city of Albany. We still love our home, our street, our neighborhood. Our kids still read books, ride bikes, climb trees. We still check on our neighbors, talk with our friends, and visit our beautiful places. We do all this because we know and now of all times, we trust public servants to keep our community safe. One of the things we see now that has always been there, but is often hidden, is that the strength of this community is not only in those most visible and most celebrated public servants, but also in those least visible and least recognized who still do their jobs and do them well. When, not tomorrow, but sometime, we come out on the other side of this event, it will be in large part thanks to their work. Cleaning crews, caretakers, cooks, laundry workers, delivery drivers, warehouse laborers, many of whom are not paid fairly or treated well, even as they are straining under the added burden. In the middle of all that, with all the ways that you or our city councilors could lead by recognizing and supporting the many, many people helping the community weather the storm, I'm deeply disappointed that you are spending time on a resolution about guns. A resolution that, by the admission of its own text, makes no changes to laws or rules. A resolution that, because of this crisis, cannot be debated in a face-to-face meeting. A resolution that does nothing at all to help our community through that same crisis. I have great admiration for the value of public institutions on good days and especially on bad ones. I appreciate what public servants and elected officials give up to serve in their offices, but I cannot understand and do not respect using those offices, those institutions, to do something so unnecessary as to pass a resolution like that at a time like this. I encourage council members to vote no, drop that subject, and focus instead on something that our community really needs. I object to the city council resolution supporting Second Amendment rights. Thank you for your time. Eric Rao, 721 5th Avenue, Southwest. To whom it may concern, it has come to my attention that the Albany City Council will soon be considering passing a resolution declaring Albany to be a sanctuary city for gun ownership. I would like to, in all strongest terms, condemn the decision to even raise this issue, let alone vote to pass it. My objections are not solely limited to my, limited to my own personal views on the need for increased gun violence prevention. This is, in fact, my least important reason for protesting this process. My primary concern is that the local government should spend its time addressing the ongoing COVID-19 issues in our community rather than pursue pointless political exercises that seem to have infected our federal governmental processes. I thought we were better than that. Furthermore, it is especially disappointing that this would be brought to a vote during, during a time when it would be expected that many of our citizens would be self-quarantined in our own homes and either be unable or unwilling to present their opinions during a normal city council meeting. Democracy requires a government that is accountable to the people, and an attempt by our elected officials to push their pet projects during a time where the people's voices are less likely to be heard is disgraceful. Finally, firearm ownership is already protected by the Constitution. What a waste of time and money. This will be remembered during the next election cycle. Matthew Ark, Ward 1. I am opposed to passing Counselor Sykes' resolution to declare Albany a Second Amendment sanctuary city. I'm surprised that the council has chosen this time to vote on the resolution while no open public discussion of this contentious issue is possible. Letters read into the record are fine and good, but are a poor substitute for genuine public comment. Writing letters to council is not foremost in people's minds right now. They are concerned with their families and friends, with their employment, with how to make it through this difficult time, not with a vanity council resolution. At a minimum, this decision should be delayed. I would think that in these troubled times, the council has more urgent business than the passage of a resolution that doesn't actually carry any legal weight. How much staff time has the council wasted in pursuit of this? staff time has the council wasted in pursuit of this? How does this help with the city of Albany's budget woes? Resolutions such as this do not protect us and aren't in line with the vast majority of voters who support common sense gun laws. Even further, resolutions such as this could open the city up to lawsuits from victims of gun violence. Most Americans support common sense gun safe laws that can keep our families safe, background checks on all gun sales, and red flag laws. Instead of passing dangerous resolutions with no impact on state or local law, I ask you to focus on solutions that can keep our families safe in Albany, Oregon. On average, over 400 Oregonians die from gun violence each year, the vast majority by suicide. Let's focus on getting people the help they need rather than glorifying guns. Our elected and appointed leaders like you have an obligation to ensure that law enforcement authorities enforce the law, particularly those laws that help keep us safe from senseless gun violence. I'll continue to advocate for common sense gun laws and work hand-in-hand with you and law enforcement to keep our communities safe. Respectfully, Bernadette Niederer, 1116 11th Avenue Southwest. I am writing to you as a follow-up to my previous email on February 13, full text included below. I strongly urge you to vote in opposition of the Second Amendment resolution. This serves no positive purpose as it does not change anything about the already intact rights of gun owners. Instead, the only impact this resolution will have will be to divide and alienate the many members of our community, myself included, who happen to have a different viewpoint and a different set of values from Mr. Sykes. This is a very challenging time for our community. What we need now is unity. This resolution does not protect anyone's rights. It divides and distracts at a time when we should be laser-focused on pulling together and supporting each other. I would be ashamed to live in a city that makes it a point to adopt a divisive resolution prioritizing the rights of guns over the rights, livelihood, and well-being of all of our citizens during our great time of need. Please vote in opposition of this necessary divisive resolution and focus instead on what matters at this moment: the physical, emotional, and economic well-being of our community in the face of a true crisis. Kate Morgan, 829 Hickory Street Northwest. And she has attached an email that she sent to everyone on February 13. Please vote no on the resolution to make Albany a sanctuary city for guns. This legislation that is circulating across the United States, and it needs to be stopped here in Oregon, please vote against this for the following reasons. It will establish that the city will not recognize any laws passed by the state requiring stricter safety around gun ownership. During this pandemic, the number of cases of domestic violence and child abuse is skyrocketing. You should be taking a stand on issues surrounding victim support, not gun support. You should instead be passing policies to protect people's lives, not the rights of the gun manufacturing industry, especially during this pandemic. This action is exploiting the pandemic for personal and political ideology. I strongly oppose this resolution. Please vote no. Deborah Higby Sudila. Dangerous individuals, i.e. partner beaters, should not feel they have nothing to lose if they are convicted of battering their partner. Proposed state legislation may actually be a deterrent to such heinous acts. Common sense firearms legislation is what I support, and I am a hunter and firearms owner and am licensed to carry in 36 states. I do not oppose certain public hearings, public buildings having no firearm paralegal seat. Albany has no need of such legislation proposed by insecure council members seeking attention. Bert Ducktail, 4455 Bramblewood Lane, and this is in the Palestine area. Mayor and council, as a lifetime member of the Disabled American Veterans and Veterans of Foreign Wars, I'm very strongly opposed to this proposed resolution. It is pure theater done at a time when the council needs to be addressing things of paramount importance in our community. Kowtowing to QAnon and conspiracy theories have absolutely no place in Albany's local governance. I also do not believe the city has the legislative authority to try and override something that has not happened. The two most egregious points are: be it further resolved that the city council opposes any state or federal law that abridges or is contrary to the provisions of the constitutions of the United States of America and the state of Oregon preserving the people's right to keep and bear arms; be it further resolved that the city council strongly supports the rights of the people to keep and bear arms as stated in the constitutions of the United States of America and Oregon as interpreted by the United States Supreme Court and Oregon Supreme Court; and opposes any state or federal law that unconstitutionally restricts these rights. I believe it is ludicrous to think that anyone on council has the education or experience to make a valid Constitution argument that could cast muster, sursurary, to the Supreme Court of the United States. Trying to posture that effect is asinine, in my humble opinion. Yet, the proposal wants to do just that and set Albany up as a poster child for civil disobedience by saying Albany knows better than higher levels of authority, and by their action imply and bind that Albany citizens agree to same. Very bad call. This resolution should not pass, but if that is contemplated, at least have the guts to postpone it and do it in front of your constituents for them to face you versus hiding behind cameras. Ray Kupcinski, 1303 Tamarack Port Southwest. I have learned that a resolution making Albany a sanctuary city for guns will be brought to a vote tomorrow night at a virtual city council meeting. State and federal laws protect guns' rights, so such an action is completely unnecessary. I'm especially concerned that the resolution is being brought to the council during this unprecedented time of lockdown and quarantine. The opportunity for public comment on this ill-advised resolution is severely limited. If those proposing the resolution feel strongly that it has merits, then it needs to be discussed at a later date with ample public input. Proponents need to justify the need for this proposal. Sincerely, Deanna Minato. Greetings to any and all who read this concerning the meeting agenda listed below: Adoption of Resolutions Supporting Second Amendment Rights. I am from District 1 and am not in favor of becoming a sanctuary city for firearms. I do own guns, and I am a proud American. However, that being said, I also believe in more regulation and licensing of firearms. To make us exempt from the rest of the state or country does not make us, as a community, a whole. It can divide us further from the group. At this time, I feel like this debate can be tabled till more discussion with the community can be had or a wider public knowledge should be shared. We, as a city, are not a militia of our own. We are not our own government. We are members of Oregon and the USA. Public safety and community should be our number-one goals, not letting folks believe they can run around like vigilantes or cowboys in the city streets. Thank you for your time. T.J. Knight. I have become aware today that the city council has a discussion on the agenda for tomorrow's virtual meeting due to the coronavirus and self-quarantining that relates to whether Albany should become a gun sanctuary city. This is a controversial topic and one that the city commissioners should take up when they are confined to their homes and cannot hear and see the citizens of this great city share feedback on this issue. This feels like a segment of the council must hope to take advantage of the fact that citizens cannot show up and be heard to launch a partisan discussion and vote. This is wrong. As a concerned and involved citizen, I implore upon the council and the city manager to delay any discussion of this issue until life is back to normal and citizens can participate fully in our democratic process. Sincerely, Maura Wilson. Albany City Council, I wanted to start my letter by thanking you for your service to our city and for your willingness to continue working for our community while you and your families are going through the unprecedented challenges we all face due to COVID-19. I believe that your actions over the next several days and weeks have the potential to either show solidarity with the most vulnerable members of our society or abandon these individuals through misguided rhetoric and petty political revenge. The Albany City Council vote on Second Amendment rights will show the state of Oregon one of two things: either that the city of Albany is a beacon of safety and protection for abused women and children, or that the city of Albany will serve as a complacent bystander of domestic violence perpetrators in our community. I'm writing to you as the father of two daughters, a husband, a son, and a gun owner. By now, we have all read numerous reports of increased cases of domestic violence and child abuse skyrocketing during the global lockdown of families around the world. Threat to women and children is being described in some accounts as a horrifying surge in domestic violence. It is unclear whether the council vote is intended to just support Second Amendment rhetoric or actually decrease law enforcement ability to protect victims of domestic violence. In either event, a vote in favor will be of the city of Albany becoming a Second Amendment sanctuary city will be seen nationwide as a door slammed in the face of those that have been victims of domestic violence in the past or are currently experiencing violence in their lives. To hide behind the shroud of a digital city council meeting with no members of the public physically present and a vote in support of this resolution would be a disservice to our community. At a minimum, I ask you to delay an uninformed vote on this matter until more information is understood on the connection between the Second Amendment sanctuary resolution and domestic violence in our community during the current stay-at-home orders. Safe at home should be safe at home. I ask for your courage to stand up in solidarity with women and children that have experienced domestic violence in the past and who had the strength to come forward and report their abuse. Our community has made me proud to call this area my home for the past 15 years, and I would like this to continue. As our community deals with school closures, widespread layoffs, and the global pandemic, I urge you to continue your steadfast determination to protect our values that we hold so dear in Oregon by voting no on the resolution for city of Albany supporting the Second Amendment. Thank you for your service to our city. Sincerely, Matt Melantine. Thank you for your commitment to our democracy by choosing to run an election to serve in your current capacities. I acknowledge it is no easy journey to get to represent your constituents and appreciate the energy and time involved in public service. I write to oppose any status for gun owners which would make it easier for violence-prone individuals to abuse their gun ownership rights. During my career as a social worker, I became familiar with how some folks will abuse their right of gun ownership for the sake of exerting power and control over others. The costs to our society have long been underestimated in both financial and non-financial terms. Just ask survivors of gun violence. The dead can no longer speak, but I can. I would not be allowed to maintain my driver's license and vehicle registration if I even attempted to use either in a violent manner. Drunk driving is an act of violence. Reckless driving is an act of violence. Hit-and-run is an act of violence. Would you want someone to be shielded from the reasonable consequences of their irresponsible decisions with their driving privileges? As a society, we agreed a long time ago that no one has the unbridled right to maintain their driving privileges after demonstrating their lack of regard for others' safety. As has been proven time and again, with rights come responsibilities. Those who choose to interpret their right to gun ownership as a right to perpetrate violence on others should face similar consequences as those who threaten and kill others. A civilized society honors the need to protect all of us from those who irresponsibly exert their rights as a freedom without responsibilities. Please, please oppose sanctuary city status for gun owners. Respect state laws enacted to benefit all of us and not just a few. Catherine M. Campanella Sterns. First off, I hope that you are all safe and healthy. I'm glad that you're taking the necessary distancing measures needed to meet each other with a digital platform to hold a council vote during the trying and unprecedented times our nation and the world is facing with COVID-19. It is for this reason that I think holding a vote concerning whether Albany should be a Second Amendment rights sanctuary city is not pertinent at this time. A vote to make Albany a Second Amendment sanctuary city is a bold statement with underlying aggressive and unnecessary tons of racist backlash against sanctuary cities that have been declared over the past few years to protect immigrants. This vote is not something that the council should be trying to rush into the end zone while the citizens of Albany are in fight-or-flight mode, figuring out where or how they will work, who will watch their children while they are at, if able, work while public schools are online, leaving them at home. I personally feel that a vote held without in-person comment from the public is irresponsible and does not reflect the governance that we deserve as American citizens. I propose that you postpone the vote in light of the COVID-19 crisis and reassess this issue when social distancing measures are lifted. Colin M. Dear Council, I encourage you to promote transparency in city government and postpone your proposed vote becoming a sanctuary city for firearms until a future date when the public and city council are about to meet in person. You owe it to your residents to allow them the opportunity to give verbal testimony. Thank you. Chaz Jones. Dear Albany councilors, I would like to ask what does it mean to be a sanctuary city for guns? State and federal law protects the rights of gun owners. What would be added to this by Albany being a sanctuary city? I feel like citizens should have a chance to meet and speak in the chambers in person to voice their thoughts on this resolution before it is voted on. I would like to propose this vote be delayed until we can speak to you face-to-face. Such an important issue should not be decided while you all are tucked away in the privacy of your homes during this shutdown. Can you please point me to the meetings where this was brought up and discussed? Thank you. Denise Binger, 320 Sixth Avenue Southwest. Hi. I write to you on the evening prior to your city council meeting on April 8, the night of Passover. I was informed of this council meeting by word of mouth in the neighborhood and was informed that a resolution will be voted on regarding designating Albany a sanctuary city for gun owners. While I respect the discourse regarding protecting citizens' rights to the Second Amendment, I do not agree with holding a remote city council meeting to discuss this matter during the time of a pandemic that is deeply impacting our community right here in Albany. This agenda item feels like an exploitation of a pandemic to advance an extremist agenda, particularly given the fact that there has been no clear instruction or opportunity for community members of Albany to express to their council their disagreement or agreement with this policy matter. Furthermore, I would urge the city council to forego any future meetings until there is a way in which members of the community can view and participate in public comment during its city council meetings. I recognize these are unprecedented times, but that is when our democracy is tested, and the trust voters have placed in its representatives is critical to ensuring we come out of this crisis stronger than before. Elected officials must honor the voices of their voters and community members by creating space for them at the table, but not operating behind the scenes, making policy decisions that don't accurately represent the values of all community members, and does nothing to address the real issues facing Albany citizens in this moment. Take care and be well. Erin Carhart, 624 Broad Alvin Street Southwest. Good evening. My name is Diana Carhart, and I, along with my family, live in the downtown Montith Historic District of Albany. I am writing this evening to express my extreme disappointment with my city council's decision to discuss and call for a vote on the sanctuary city for guns resolution. Right now, our community is trying to move forward during a tumultuous time. Our nurses are pulling overtime, our grocery store employees are on double shifts, and many of our citizens are at home wondering how long their companies can afford to pay their salaries while making $0 in profits. As much as I support the Second Amendment and the Constitution of the United States, now is not the time for this resolution. It should be discussed as a community in person, not in the shadows of secrecy. I ask that you think of those nurses and grocery store clerks. Folks, who do you depend on for votes? I ask that you remember and think on what it is that they need right now from our government, what families like mine need. I ask that you make the moral choice for our community, because should you not, there are other folks in our beautiful city who are more than willing to step up to the plate, and it's a very rough time to be unemployed. Wishing you all a blessed, holy week and a reflective Passover should you celebrate them. Best wishes, Diana L. Carhart, 624 Broad Alvin Street, Southwest. That concludes the testimony.
Okay, Marilyn, 45 minutes. So, thank you. Yeah, you did not even take a break. That's pretty impressive. So, okay, so that was, that was all the testimony then. Okay, and okay, thank you. Peter, you said you wanted to say a few words?
Yes, I wanted to add my thanks to yours, to Marilyn. She has a glass of water there that she's drinking now and a throat lozenge. I wanted to point out that this is obviously new ground we're breaking with virtual meetings. So, as we try to be as transparent as possible, we invited comments. And you might want to, or you might want to put people back on the meeting if you can. I wanted to point out that this issue, or this was requested by the council in mid-February, and that was before...
Thanks, Peter, for not being able to pick you up for some reason.
Can you mute everybody and then?
Let me unmute everybody. And you can unmute yourself, Peter, now.
Okay, just wanted to point out that this was requested by the council in mid-February before the coronavirus issue or crisis descended upon us. It is, of course, a prerogative of the council to table this discussion if they should so choose. But again, they can have a discussion about it tonight. They can make a decision tonight, or they can table the decision for later. Any one of those options is available to you, and I'll just leave it at that, Mayor. Thank you.
Oh, Mayor, you have to unmute yourself.
Okay. All right. Okay, well, this is the resolution. That's on page three. And what would you like to do? Did you want to delay this, or did you want to discuss it? Action, what do you want to do? And I don't see any, put your pins up if you want to speak. Okay, And then Dick will be after Alex. And then Dick will be after Alex.
Oh, I've been thinking about this thing since we first had the discussion about it. And first and foremost, like Peter said, this was not done during the COVID virus pandemic stay-at-home laws. I'm not comfortable having this discussion without the public being involved or having access to come to a meeting and speak to us at city council. So, having said that, I could propose that we postpone it, because at this stage, with all the feedback, with all the things that I've researched, I would have to vote no against this. I've talked to each of the city councils individually that I felt I needed to talk with, and right now, and I'm a gun owner, I'm a veteran. My life for the government, for the federal, to serve in the military. I'm just not comfortable right now doing this, and if we decide we're going to vote on tonight, I'm going to have to vote no.
Okay.
Uh, yes. A large number. Can you hear me at all?
Yes, we can hear you.
I pressed the unmuted button, and maybe I muted myself. I don't.
No, you're okay. You're okay now.
Am I okay? Okay.
Yes.
Uh, yes, a large number of our constituents have requested that we meet and talk to them in person. And I would like to move that we table this issue until such time as we can have public meetings and meet the public in our council chamber. I'd like to move to that effect.
Okay, is there a second?
I second that. Alex.
Okay, all right. Mike, you wanted to, or, yeah, it was Mike you want to say something, yes.
Yes. There's a lot of disinformation going around, and it distresses me that people think that the resolution was to harm children, to harm families, to make it easier for domestic violence to go on. Those arguments are valid, but it has nothing to do with this resolution. It has nothing to do with that. And it distresses me that this was voted on by a vote of five to one, I believe, in February to go down this road. And I'm going to vote to postpone it so people can come and express their concerns. But maybe we ought to also think about having a First Amendment sanctuary city so that we can make sure that the First Amendment of the Constitution is adhered to. How many people would be opposed to that? Freedom of speech and freedom of the press. How many would be opposed to that? Because the article in the Democrat Herald was way off. It spread false information on the idea of a Second Amendment sanctuary city. It's making a statement. So, I'll go with the rest of the folks and postpone this until we can meet in chambers. I have no problem with that.
Okay, Rich and.
Sorry, I got to say something.
For Alex, can you wait just a sec? It's Rich and.
I will.
You.
I don't mind if this is postponed, but let's understand a couple of things. You're talking over 30 people had their say. And there was a whole bunch of disinformation about, well, gee, we're doing this behind closed doors and yada, yada, yada. Given the fact that 30-some-odd people had their say, if you look at the council chambers under normal circumstances, you might have two people, three, on something, you know, the place might be full, and it might be full with this item. But there is a gigantic disinformation program going on about this, about how this is trying to let children be killed and yada, yada, yada. Well, that speaks volumes in and of itself. Frankly, as far as people writing letters, I care about what people in Albany say. I don't care what somebody from Corvallis says about much of anything. They're not my constituent. And using our time to listen to somebody from Corvallis that is one of the also-rans of the system, I think is just not productive. But at any rate, if you vote for this, I would go either way as far as whether or not we do it right away or if we do it down the road.
Okay, Bessie?
Yes, first of all, I want to thank Peter for bringing up the fact that this was actually presented back in February before all of this started, and it was just put on the agenda for this meeting, and it's been on there for, you know, a while. So, I just want to make sure that people realize that we're not doing it like a back-room deal or some of the things that people said, you know, kind of take offense to it, because this is just a scary, just unprecedented time we're going through. And so, we have to do it this way, but I would not be opposed to postponing it to let, you know, if there are 30 people against it, there might be 30 people for it. It just, you know, right now, I don't think this, even a council meeting, is on the top of people's minds. They're thinking more of their families and working or not working. So, if we vote to postpone it, I have no problem with that. Thank you.
Okay, Alex?
So, I wanted to speak on behalf of, in favor, on behalf of Mike Sykes. I know Mike Sykes for over three years now, or two years now, and he's an honorable guy, honorable man. He's also a veteran, and he and I share a common brotherhood with Rich Kellum as well. We do agree on some things, we agree on some things. I said, but my concern is that attacks made on him by people that don't know him is a concern for me. You know, I was taken aback by some of the things said about him, and I think that is inappropriate and wrong for someone to address a city council like that. And I do believe we should postpone, and I've made that before. But I searched this entire document for the word sanctuary, and not one time has it appeared. This is not about making Albany a sanctuary city, and it really bothers me that people put that out there in reference to Mike. Counselor Sykes, I apologize if that happened. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Bill, and then Mike?
No, I'm just giving it a thumbs up.
Oh, okay, yeah. Bill?
Well, I think everybody's made some good points, but the thing that bothers me more than anything is listening to Marilyn read the letters. It's apparent to me, or it appears, that many of the letter writers never read the resolution, because I'm hearing things stated in letters that just absolutely aren't true and are not part of the resolution. So, I'll vote for the motion. I think there is a lot of misinformation, and regardless if I eventually vote for or against some resolution in the future, that's not my point. My point is there's a big need to have accurate information out there for the people to hear and comment on rather than what we've got in front of us tonight.
Okay, anyone else? Bessie?
I was just doing the thumbs up too, sorry.
All right. Okay, so there's a motion on here to postpone it. And the only thing, counsel, when this does come back, you know, we probably will have more, you know, more people on it. I want you to consider really, if this is something that we really need to be having, you know, placed into our archives, it is not as regular city program that we, you know, provide with our city services. This is stuff that usually dealt with at the state and federal level, and ones that actually have that. So, do you take into consideration, there'll probably be some more time on this, and both people will be on the sides of the fence. Okay, so with that, let's go ahead, and the motion is to table this until we're in council chambers. And why don't we? Well, I would imagine. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Okay, didn't hear any, but it has to be. Counselors, I didn't hear you speak up then, if there was somebody that said no. Okay, all right, so others, if they are listening to this, and this will be brought up at a future council meeting when we're able to get back into our council. So, okay, anything else, folks, on this item? Okay. Is releasing a sewer easement for the Cox Creek Interceptor improvements? And I believe Stacy, well, I lost her in the screen here. Basically, I'll throw, she wanted to speak on this?
Sure. Good evening. Hi, good evening, Mayor and councilors. So, this sewer easement is being released. Its purpose was for the Cox Creek Interceptor Sewer. A project was recently completed that involved realigning this segment of the sewer line. So, this existing sewer easement is just no longer needed.
All right, any questions, counsel?
No.
Uh, yes. Was this the section of sewer line that lost a bit of sewage? And put us in trouble with the waterkeeper people?
Counselor Olson, not directly. So, this sewer line is under capacity and has contributed to sewer overflows, but the sewer line that overflowed into, that we had the SSO on, was the Riverfront Interceptor.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any who's got a question? Bessie?
I've moved to the resolution.
I second it.
Okay, motion has been made to adopt the resolution, and any discussion? Not seen anyone? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, all right, motion carried unanimously. All right, next would be award of authorized contracts, and this is on five A through B. And I believe Stacy wanted to talk about those two.
Yeah, and if it's okay, I think I would just go through and provide a brief summary for all four items. And so, I'm going to start with the first two items, because they're both related to the Lochner Road Improvements Project. One is for a construction contract award, and the other is for a railroad agreement. So, the Lochner Road Project is being constructed to support a planned expansion at Snow Temp that is expected to create approximately 60 jobs. The city partnered with Snow Temp, ODOT, and other state agencies to develop the scope of the project and then also identify the funding that was needed to construct the improvements. We received great bids for this project, and based on the apparent low bid, it is estimated to be under budget by approximately $340,000. And staff is recommending that council award the project to the low bidder, who's North Saniam paving. They have the low bid of $2,407,559. In addition to the street and utility improvements, the Lochner Project also includes reconstructing two railroad crossings, one on Marion Street and one on Lochner Road. Staff has been working with the Railroad Albany and Eastern for some time now to identify impacts to businesses and scheduling considerations that will hopefully minimize the impacts to the businesses. For this item, we are wanting council to authorize the Public Works Engineering and Community Development Director to sign an agreement with Albany and Eastern, which will allow them to reconstruct the two crossings. The, let's see, actually, not the third project, but it's item five B on the agenda, is for the Ninth Avenue Street Improvements Project. This is one of those projects that I discussed back in February at a work session during design. Staff was anticipating that bids would come in over the project budget, and the bids did come in as anticipated, but we received four bids in response to the advertisement. And so, for this construction contract, staff is recommending that council award the contract to KNE Excavating. They had the low bid of $1,387,485. And then, the last item is staff's requesting that council approve a contract increase. This is for the Vine Street Water Treatment Plant Excelator Improvements Project. So, council initially heard about the changed conditions last summer, back in August. And then, this was also one of the projects that I discussed at the February work session. This is one of those cases that, you know, if we would have stopped work, there would have been impacts to the public and additional costs. So, staff is coming to council requesting authorizing payment for work that has been already completed. And so, for this last item, staff is recommending council approve the contract increase to McClure &amp; Sons as outlined in the memo. So, that's a really quick recap. I can answer any questions if there are any.
Okay, and for some reason on my laptop, I just lost everything, so now I'm back to only seeing Mike, Bessie, and Dick. So, somebody's going to have to let me know as I'm trying to get back in here. Does anybody have any?
There seems to be no questions right now.
Okay, all right, okay. So, let's go ahead and do awarding the contract for Lochner Road Improvements. Counsel, do you have any questions over there?
I have none.
Move to.
I'll make a motion. We approve the contract.
Was that Bill, the motion?
There were two of us at the same time.
And Counselor Kellum, second.
Okay, all right. Any discussion on the Lochner Road Improvements? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, all right, I'm still trying to get back in. All right, motion carried. Next item is awarding the contract for the Ninth Avenue Street Improvement. Any questions?
Move to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, there's been a motion made in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Right, and next is authorizing the railroad crossing reconstruction of Albany and Eastern Railway. Question? Was there a motion?
Yes.
Okay, and is, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, and last is approving the increase for the Vine Street Water Treatment Plant Excelator Improvement. This is on page 19. Any questions on this one?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. Any discussion? Bessie?
Yes, you know, I can understand after reading the description that why the increase, because they couldn't see it at the beginning, but, you know, I still wonder, you know. But, you know, I still wonder, you know, just how much money we're going to put into this Vine Street Treatment Plant, or Vine Street Plant. Because, I mean, it just seems like we're just putting money into it all the time. You know, it's an old plant and I guess it's necessary. But I just want to just go on record saying that I think we were just putting a lot of money into it and I just wonder if it's worth it.
Yep, Stacy, did you want to make any comments?
Yeah, I, I could, I know that the Vine Water Treatment Plant, it does provide additional capacity and flexibility. And Albany's unique in that we do have two, two water sources with different water rights. So, you know, I guess I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, Stacy.
Yeah, and that does, that does bring back the memories for the waterworks. And we always knew when we built a new plant, in case we ever lost one plant or something malfunctioned, we always had that backup for all. So, so yeah, it is beneficial having two plants. Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, next page is adopting of the calendar. Any items being removed? This item for discussion, then I'll enter.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
I'd like to.
What, Dick? Did you want an item poll?
No, no, I just wanted to comment that my appointment and I'm looking for a name here. I should have had the place marked. Anyway, she works for ODOT and I think the, the more we can make a good impression on ODOT employees, I think the better off we'll be. She's the person in charge of the committee I go to on Thursdays. It's the ODOT Street Construction Committee that I serve on.
So Steph?
And I've been very much impressed with her and has that in that position that she's in. So I'm glad to appoint her.
Okay, all right, so there's been a motion and a second, and this is consent counter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, and I do have all of you counsel back up on my laptop. Okay, and next is extending the grant deadline. This is for extending the deadline. Project, this would be project, I believe. Page fifty-six.
Yeah, mayor, we have either Seth or, oh, Seth is here, okay?
Oh, this is for the tourism promotion. Yeah, and you also did receive a letter also, I think from Peggy Burris for the, from the TLT Committee encouraging us to extend that deadline. Seth, did you want to say anything?
I see. I could just say really briefly, there's really no budgetary impact at this point. But as you know, historically, the collaborative, collaborative tourism promotion grant dollars that are allocated annually need to be spent by the end of the fiscal year. So we're just simply requesting that, given that all the events have, that haven't happened or won't happen, that they just be given an additional year to expend already committed dollars. And that's really it.
Okay, council have any questions? All right, did you want to make a motion?
I would move to extend the collaboration tourism.
Okay. There was a second? Yep. Okay, all right, question?
That was an extension to thirty of the two thousand twenty-one.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, carry. And since he reminded me, and I don't know if Stacy's still on, but our capital improvement program, we always have a meeting on that, April. And I have a feeling we won't be having that meeting, so what's with that process this time? You have to. Or even Chris or Jeff might know.
I'm sorry, mayor, I missed your question.
For our capital improvement program, we always have a, you know, a meeting, joint meeting with like Plan Commission and Kara and the council and Budget Committee. Are we having that this year? Or not?
This is Jeff, I can speak up. With the biannual budget, we didn't anticipate having a CIP meeting this year. We have everything programmed into the budget and from our perspective, we're all set for the, for the next fiscal year.
Okay, excellent, okay, thank you. And all right, next is business from the council, so I'll start up above mine.
I have nothing.
Okay, Bessie, you're below mine.
Yeah, okay, I'll just say that I had my virtual meeting. We had our first Finance and Taxation Committee meeting with the League of Oregon Cities. It was a four-hour meeting and it went very well. And one of the questions that we have, this was our first meeting, the next one's April twentieth. They're looking, or we're looking for any ideas that we would want to take to the legislature, be it a special session this year or the regular session next year, that would like be a revenue producer or cost reductions. And so if anybody has any ideas, I mean, we're looking for any ideas. We're looking at property tax, you know, changes, we're looking at raisings. I think there is a ballot measure going on to raise the cigarette tax. I did bring up the sugar soda tax and that went over the lead balloon.
I don't care.
But apparently one city has it and others have tried it. But if anybody has any, any ideas that would be a good revenue source, that we could go to the legislature and, you know, present it to them from, through our lobbyists, just email me and let me know and I'll take it to our next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you, Bessie. Dick?
Oh, nothing.
Okay, all right, and then Bill?
Nothing, thank you.
Uh huh, and Alex?
Yeah, I saw on Facebook that the Albany signs are being put up to the entrance to the city. Are they up already?
Oh, you mean the entrance, the welcome to Albany?
Yeah.
Council Johnson, that's correct, they were, they were mounted on Monday of this week.
So the question I have from a few constituents is this, is that I thought that, you know, stuff the city gets done goes off a public bid and I didn't see anything on that.
No.
Council?
No, our guys, our parks maintenance people did that.
Oh, the parks maintenance people did that?
Yeah.
Okay, I was just concerned because people were bringing, bringing stuff to me about it. So that's good. I, I attended, so that's, I'm done with that. I attended a local business downtown, a Natty Dresser did a Facebook Live through the Albany Downtown Association. And I thought it was well done by the Albany Downtown Association and Austria did a great job. So I think if they do more of those kinds of things, I, I think that they'll still be able to, to make, make sales and, and do the perp side pickup thing. I think was just amazing event. I bought two pairs of shoes and some other stuff and I hadn't been in the store in a while because of work and city council and my life in general. But it was nice to see Austria do that presentation.
Yep, it's great. Okay, Rich? Did you have anything?
You're muted, Rich.
Oh, Rich, you're not on?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
If you keep, you watch the news and every third thing they talk about is how somebody died, how somebody now has the virus, et cetera, et cetera. I'd like to put that in perspective a little bit. There are four million two hundred thousand people who live in Oregon. Little over two thousand have the coronavirus. Just do the mathematics, we're talking about three one hundredths of one percent of our population as the coronavirus. Now, how many people died? Well, thirty-three people died. And if you, if you divide that, that comes out seven point eight five times ten to the minus six, which is in the millions. I mean, it's six zeros followed by a seven, point six zeros followed by a seven, of the people of Albany, or the people of Oregon who have died of the coronavirus. Now, I don't want anyone to think that, I don't think this is an important thing to deal with. It is. But it's also important to remind yourself, the world is not falling apart. We're doing things so it doesn't fall apart. But the number of people right now is very small. Now, it's going to climb rapidly in the next two weeks, from what I understand. But I'm just saying, let's keep our heads.
Cool.
Yeah, stay cool about it. Recognize the chance of you getting it, if you are careful, is very small.
Okay, all right, and I did not have anything. It's just been kind of a whole new world here lately and it seems like I, it's been more productive at times. I can attend more meetings via GoTo and Zoom and Microsoft, you know, online or, or on the phone. And I'm not having to run all back and forth across town in between meetings. So it's just been kind of very strange here lately, but, so yeah. And so that, I think, and Peter, you had some items, didn't you?
Yes, mayor, I'd like to bring the council up to, to speed on a couple of things. Well, first of all, thank you all for joining this meeting tonight and spending the amount of prep work you did to get ready for it. I know it's, it's still something that's quite new and we're still working out the bugs. First of all, Chuck Marino is online with us and I invited him to provide a short update on our emergency operations center and its activation. So Chuck, are you still available? I see it's dark outside at your house.
Chuck, we're not hearing you.
It looks like you're speaking, you're unmuted.
That's your mute thing. He's muted.
No, he's, it looks green to me, but.
Oh.
Chuck?
He's green.
Yeah.
Okay, there you go. Do you say muted or neutered?
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. We've had the emergency operations center up and running for a couple of weeks now. Essentially, we started off with the main goal of maintaining city operations throughout all of this. And we succeeded in that, we've had some challenges, we've had some re discussions of schedules and things like that. But we are functioning and we are maintaining what we do. We're moving our focus into supporting the community now. We're working a little bit more with, with Recovers or a donation site that we're working with, where neighbors are able to get their needs posted and also any sort of donations that are out there too. And that's been a good system that's been working. And we're also looking at supporting the community in other ways as well with regards to making sure that all the efforts that we're putting forth in this are making a difference. Any, any questions for me?
Thanks, Chuck. Okay, and also online with us is Seth Sherry and he has provided, and I'll invite him to talk here in a minute, but he, he gave me an update. You'll remember, thank you for implementing the Small Business Emergency Loan Program. The window was from Friday till Tuesday and they've received seventeen complete applications. It's a little bit lower than had been expected. But the, the exact reason for why that's the case is not entirely known. There's some speculation that maybe it's due to rapidly shifting federal environment or perhaps our marketing efforts didn't go far enough. In any case, there have been enough applications that we can allocate the entirety of the emergency loan fund. And Seth is putting together a survey to try to determine how best to use any funds that might become additionally available to us. All the businesses that, that will be approved will be contacted tomorrow and they'll be able to sign documents and receive their funds by Wednesday of next week. And I would ask Seth if he has anything to add to that. I'm just, those are just your words as a matter of fact.
There's not much to add, Peter. Again, it's been interesting talking with, it looks like I have a visitor. Good night, Willie, I'll be in just a minute. It's been interesting to try to figure out why there hasn't been a higher number of applicants. And really, the, as you alluded to in my note earlier, Peter, the federal landscape for funding has changed so dramatically in the last week alone since we launched and started this emergency loan program. That may have a huge effect here and that's the sense of the community lending works as well. That being said, I think there is opportunity to further understand what outstanding needs may exist, even in light of federal assistance over the next few weeks. And if there is a chance to recapitalize or look at use of remaining funds, I'll be ready to give you some insight into what we learn over the next couple. I'm happy to answer questions if they exist.
Any questions for Seth? All right, thank you, Seth. And then you may have noticed that as part of the CARES Act, Albany will receive about, I say about, but it's a pretty exact number, $220,000, $220,804 in CDBG funds. Those funds have to be spent on activities that will address disruptions due to coronavirus. And proposed allocation from staff is that $110,000 be allocated to, to plus up our emergency small business loan program, $105,000 for emergency housing assistance for households that earn less than eighty percent of the area's median income, and then another $5,800 for emergency supplies for agencies in need or shelter bids. Council can modify those amounts at the hearing that will be held, as a matter of fact, it's our next meeting, which is April twenty-second. And on the line is also Ann Catlin and I would invite her to make a comment if she's so inclined. Ann?
Yeah, thank you, Peter. So I think we are trying to seek input on how to best use these funds to help businesses and households through this unprecedented time. And we should learn a lot more about business needs after the survey Seth is doing and with these applications. The activities do have to be community development block grant eligible, meaning that they primarily need to support our low-income households and residents, and could retain jobs that are considered low and moderate income and help businesses recover after the pandemic and adding jobs that might qualify as lower moderate income. But over the next two weeks, please keep your ears open for needs that could be addressed with these funds specifically to prevent the spread of or respond to the disruption of the pandemic. Any questions?
Questions for Ann? And then lastly, from the Public Works staff, we wanted to remind you about the fact that the water and sewer utilities have economic development funds that are for business development and for business retention. So those funds are restricted to use within those utilities. But we're considering how those funds might be put to work for businesses in need as a result of the coronavirus crisis. And council will receive ideas on how to put those funds to use at a, at a future meeting. And staff at the same time are considering options for helping impacted residential customers with those funds. And that's all I have, mayor, unless you have any questions.
Nope, council have any questions?
You're welcome.
And what was that? What was that on?
It was a sympathy card for John Adair's family.
Oh, okay, yeah. Yeah.
I do.
Stacy?
Yeah, Peter, I was gonna email you earlier and I had forgotten I had that meeting. Um, can, when we were in the F and T meeting, I talked to Mike, Mark Garst, Garst, I think is his name. You know, he was saying that, I was talking to him about, you know, our employees, you know, some of them being furloughed and whatever, and he said that Portland had, just in their parks and wrecking, furloughed nine hundred and fifty employees. Where are we on that, or is that something that you'd rather just email us the information? I'm just wondering.
Well, when I spoke to you all about furloughs, I gave you a number that was far higher than what we've actually done so far. So, um, we have about, uh, nine that have been furloughed, and with, with the possibility of more coming. Uh, but one of the things, you know, within the Parks Department, um, we, at this point in the year, we rely heavily on seasonal workers. And so you might say that our furloughs, as it were, uh, is replaced by the fact that we haven't hired. So now the Parks, uh, folks are, are doing that work everywhere else.
Yeah.
There's a lot of little details like that, uh, so I'm happy to talk to you at length if you have specific questions. But I'm thankful to have a hand to the lands that, that the Parks Department has moved it. And I'd point out also that, you know, we often hear about the fact that Oregon doesn't have a sales tax. I would just ask you to think of cities in Washington that rely heavily on their nine, ten percent sales taxes, what they're going through.
Yes, yes, alright, thank you.
Alright, anybody have anything else?
I'd like to add something, Mayor, um, now that I'm able to talk again. Um, two things, one, one to Counselor Alex's concern about the, the, uh, cost of the signs, uh, the welcome signs. The price that, uh, we paid for the work from the local companies who did that for us was under the limit that we would need to go out for bid. So, um, I wanted to point that, point that out, and we, we got a, a pretty good deal from them, this, uh, one, at least one of the same companies is going to be doing some substantial work to the, um, stage and the roof of the stage at Montith Park, um, as, um, a contribution to the city here in the future. Um, another, another thing is, um, on the, another thing that Alex brought up was the Facebook Live event, um, at Natty Dresser. We have now done three Facebook Live events from the Emergency Operations Center, and number four is gonna be tomorrow at eleven o'clock, when we'll have Chris Bailey and Kristen Preston talking about, um, public works and how, uh, those, uh, city functions are getting through the, the COVID-nineteen epidemic. So be sure and watch.
And they're gonna be on the city TV.
Pardon me? We don't, we don't have.
It's gonna be on the city website?
It will be on the city website, yep. You're also on Facebook Live right now.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, yeah, well, and, uh, we've had some pretty, pretty, um, good engagement this evening. You'll wanna check, uh, the, check the file on this, on the city's Facebook page later on in the evening or tomorrow, lots of comments, lots of comments.
Oh, boy. Are you sure, are you sure you want us to, we should be watching the comments or wait and get a good?
Oh, no, you bet, there, there, it's, it's been some, um, some meaningful, uh, engagement, I would say.
Uh-huh, oh, good, very good. Okay, okay.
I just wanted to ask, uh, this is a, uh, I'm gonna check in with the chiefs, how the chiefs doing? How your, how your team doing?
I'll jump in on this one, thanks for asking. Um, you know, everybody's doing good, we've kind of settled into our routines and our processes. We, uh, early on, we had a lot of PPE questions, making sure we had enough for our people, and I gotta give them, uh, the folks at AFD Props, they, uh, they stepped up to the plate and worked our vendors really hard, and, um, and we don't have any PPE shortages like a lot of other people do. But that, um, there is kind of like we talked about a little bit, a COVID cloud that hangs over everything they do, where they're used to going in and making a difference, moving quickly, you know, and we've trained that into them. Now they just have to slow down, and, you know, they gotta put on more gear, and, uh, that's taking some adjusting for them. Uh, but I'd say by and large, uh, folks are doing good, everybody's working collaboratively together to get through this.
It's good to hear, Chief, thank you.
Uh, from the PD side, thanks for asking, uh, we're just doing okay, we, we also, uh, fortunately, we're well-prepared with some PPEs. Uh, made a few adjustments, uh, as we use more and more, but we're doing okay as well. Um, we're doing our best to keep the spirits up, uh, the captains and I did a barbecue for the night shift people tonight, and we'll do another one next week for the other night shift, and we're doing some breakfasts, and, and as you know, social media, we've been having a good time trying to bring good messages out and staying positive with community. And we have a long, long waiting list for all of our porch parades and our birthday partying parade, so we're keeping busy doing that, and, uh, and also staying on top of the crime, which is, uh, we're tracking that daily as well.
Thank you very much, yeah, thanks for your work.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Chiefs. Anyone else? Alright, so next meeting dates will be Wednesday, the second, and May thirtieth, and we will let you know whether we're gonna be doing that back in the council chambers or remotely, but I have a feeling that people are at our homes, so, but, alright. And thank you, with that, we're adjourned.
Everyone stay healthy.
Yep.
Be safe, stay home.